Welcome to the League of Women Voters Tacoma Pierce County Primary Election Candidate Forum for Pierce County Council District 7. I am Lydia Zapata, the moderator, and on behalf of the League of Women Voters Tacoma Pierce County and our community sponsors, I welcome the candidates and the audience to this community candidate forum. The League of Women Voters Tacoma Pierce County acknowledges that we gather on the ancestral lands of the Coast Salish peoples, surrounded by their traditional waters in the shadow of Mount Homa. We actively seek inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and current realities. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization whose mission for the past 100 years has been to empower informed and active participation of citizens in government. Candidate forums are one of the many ways that we do this. Anyone 16 years or older can be a member of the League of Women Voters. For more information on membership, go to our website, which is L W V T P C. That's L W V T P C dot org. The candidates in ballot order for the Pierce County Council Position 7 are Josh Harris, Mitch Anderson, Robin Denson, Paula Lonergan, and Chuck West. Robin Denson was unable to attend due to a prior engagement. Josh Harris, we did not hear from, and Chuck West has not shown up. This year's primary election is August 2nd. If you're not yet registered or have moved, you may register or change your address online to, online at vote WA dot gov. That's vote WA dot gov by July 25th. You should receive your ballot by July 18th if you're a registered voter and your address is correct. If your address is not correct, you better go and re-register. Your ballot must be postmarked or placed in a ballot box by 8:00 PM on August 2nd. This forum is being recorded and will be posted at the League of Women Voters Tacoma Pierce County website. Again, that's L W V T P C dot org. L W V T P C dot org. Questions have been prepared by members of the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County and our cosponsoring organizations. We invite live audience questions via text to 253-948-6029. That's 253-948-6029. Questions must be directed to all candidates and may be reworded or consolidated. Our timekeeper today is Teri Baker of the League of Women Voters Tacoma Pierce County. She will hold up cards to let you know, candidates, when you have 60 seconds remaining, 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and when it's time to stop. When you see that stop card, you may finish your sentence. Candidates, please stay on gallery view so that you see me and the timekeeper, Teri Baker. The audience will only see the speaker. Although Teresa, it seems that you are being highlighted, so you might want to spotlight me. Please do not talk unless it's your turn. Please mute yourself when it's not your turn to speak. The audience is on mute and cannot use the chat function. A reminder that civility is expected. I ask each of you to confirm that you agree to our ground rules, which among other things include addressing the issues and not making personal attacks. Please give me a thumbs up. I'd like to see from the candidates a thumbs up that you agree to our ground rules. Thank you. That's much appreciated. We sent those ground rules out before. And again, Teresa, you're not, I'm not spotlighted on here. You're spotlighted.
Josh Harris has arrived.
Oh, thank you. Josh Harris has arrived. Thank you. Wonderful. Okay. Each candidate has up to two minutes for an opening statement. After that, the order of questions will rotate, and each candidate will be asked the same question. At the end, each candidate can make a one-minute closing statement. In order, the order of the opening two-minute statements is in ballot order. And I remind you that Rob, Robin Denson said she could not come. She's at an event that was planned many months ago and sends her sincere regrets. She sent a statement that I will read. But the order of the two-minute opening statements, we'll start with Josh Harris, then Mitch Anderson, and then I will read Robin Denson's statement, then Paula Lonergan, and then Chuck West, we do not have, did not show up. Okay, so we'll start with Josh West. Your two-minute opening statement, please.
I think that's Josh Harris.
Josh Harris, could you please give your, start with your opening statement? Josh Harris? Hello? Could you give your two-minute opening statement, please? Well, he seems to be having technical difficulties, so we will move on to Mitch Anderson, and we'll come, we'll turn around and come back and see if Josh has gotten his. But go ahead, Mitch, why don't you go ahead and do your opening two-minute statement, please?
Okay, thank you, and thank you for having us here tonight. I wanted to just share a little bit about myself. I've been a resident of Pierce County for over 55 years. Born in Tacoma, grew up in Gig Harbor, and went to Peninsula High School, and then on to Washington State University where I earned my bachelor's degree, paid for college by working up in a salmon cannery up in a little village called Iggy Gick, Alaska. After that, I married my sixth-grade sweetheart, Brenda, and we raised five kids. And those five kids between them have, we've got a ward officer in the US Marines. We've got a former Army Ranger with a couple of Bronze Stars. We've got an Eagle Scout. We've got four bachelor's degrees. We have two MBAs, and we also have a master's and an MBA in Process, plus six amazing grandkids. Moving on, though, I've worked for some of the largest companies in the nation, and I've also owned a couple of my own businesses. So, and actually, one of them has had 25 employees in a couple of locations. And, but for the last 14 years or so, I've been a financial advisor and working with individuals, families, and small business owners. My top priorities are law and order, safe communities, constitutional rights, lower taxes, financial responsibility, and parental rights. So with that, I look forward to our event this evening.
Thank you very much. Josh Harris, are you able to give your two-minute opening statement? Still having technical difficulties. We'll move on to Paula Lonergan.
Okay, I think you can hear me now. My name is Paula Lonergan, and I am running for this position and very pleased with the opportunity to be here tonight. I want to thank you all for inviting me. I was originally born in Baltimore, Maryland. I'm the oldest of seven children. I arrived in this area as a result of joining the US Air Force. I was in the Air Force for four years and started going to college. And then when I was honorably discharged, I continued going to school. I did take a little break, and in between that, I had a son and continued my education and finally graduated from the University of Puget Sound when my son was 18 months old. My degree is in public administration, and most of my career has been working in government. I have a 30-year career in having worked for the state of Washington. I've also worked for the city Tacoma. And when I retired, I began to be more actively involved in other areas of service. But even while I was working, I have served, I had served in several capacities. For the city of Tacoma, I was appointed to the Citizens Affirmative Action Advisory Committee, to the Human Rights Commission, and then later on, I became a precinct committee officer. And more recently, I was appointed to the Governor's Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, AHEP, Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. And I believe my term of, my second term of office ended in January, and I'm currently the Chair of the Civil Service Commission for the Sheriff, Pierce County Sheriff.
Thank you very much.
I'm not on gallery view. I tried to get to it, and I, so I can't see if someone's giving me a warning.
So there's, gallery view is up in the corner under view. Click on view and then select gallery view.
I'm not seeing that.
It'll be up on the right, upper-right corner, should say view.
Oh.
All right. Thank you. All right, I'm going to go ahead and read the statement that was sent by Robin Denson. And I just want to preface this by saying that this is not an endorsement by the League of Women Voters to come up Pierce County. We never endorse any candidates whatsoever. It's simply that she couldn't come, and she sent a statement, and we allow candidates who are unable to attend to send statements. So I'm going to go ahead and read what she sent. As a Gig Harbor City Council member, a business owner, mother, and of two teens, and community volunteer, Robin understands the issues Pierce County is facing. In her role as a Gig Harbor City Council member, Robin has a proven track record working with her local Gig Harbor Police Department to ensure community safety. She has also worked to ease traffic congestion at sidewalks and to preserve the community character and natural beauty, including leading efforts to conserve many acres of natural habitat and open space. She's an advocate for small businesses, and during COVID, she supported creating grant programs and easing regulations. Robin's effectiveness as a public servant has earned her support of Congressman Derek Kilmer, current County Councilmember Derek Young, as well as former Councilmember Teri Lee, the firefighters of Tacoma, Gig Harbor, and Key Peninsula, the Pierce County Central Labor Council, and Washington Conservation Voters. Robin will put her local government expertise to work tackling our government's toughest issues. She will work to reduce crime and increase neighborhood safety by supporting the first responders, justice system, and community service providers. She'll champion safer roads and pedestrian paths, broadband expansion, mental health resources, and services for children and seniors. She'll also work to attract good jobs right here in Pierce County. Robin will address the immediate homeless crisis by getting unhoused people into stable housing. Will also work on root causes and prevention. As Pierce County grows, Robin understands how important it is to retain the character and beauty that makes up each of our communities so special. She's committed to protecting our amazing environment and taking action to tackle climate change. Robin has proven experience getting positive things done in local government and is asking for your vote for Pierce County Council. That was a statement by candidate Robin Denson, who was unable to be here. And again, this is not an endorsement, simply we're reading her statement. Okay, we have apparently lost Josh Harris again, so we will proceed. Thank you, all the candidates who are here. And now we come to questions. Each candidate gets up to 90 seconds to answer a question. Live audience question, the live audience can send questions to 253-948-6029. That's 253-948-6029. The questions must be directed to all the candidates. We're going to rotate the candidate order, so we'll start with Paula Lonergan, and then we'll do Mitch. The first question is, "The county budget's four largest expenses include sewers, roads, sheriff, and human services. What is your number-one budget priority for the county and why?" Paula Lonergan.
Given our current concerns that many, many citizens are expressing regarding public safety, I believe looking at the sheriff's law enforcement budget, that's the part that I think is pretty important. There are things that I believe they've been trying to do to recruit, but there are many vacancies that need to be filled. And the fact that very few people believe that there are sufficient numbers of law enforcement available in the Key Peninsula area at any one time, I believe two deputies is the number that I have heard over and over again. There are many concerns about public safety, so that would be one of my first areas. And then public transportation would be another one, but that's my reply.
Thank you. Mitch Anderson?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So my number-one concern would be public safety, and currently, the sheriff's department is down 57 deputies, and they're also down dozens of staff. And as a result of this, the sheriff's department is having to take the detectives off of the Special Crimes Unit, including the proactive crimes unit, investigative unit that used to have 12 folks, and now they've got two. And so we really don't have anybody investigating property crimes. So in regards to the coverage, you know, living, I live in Gig Harbor, and my concern is the number of deputies that are on the west side of the Narrows Bridge. And if you have a domestic violence call that requires both of those deputies to go, one to back up the other one, and then you get a call, that may be out in Fox Island, and then you get a call for a shooting out on the southern Key Peninsula, it could take them 40 minutes to get out there, and there's really no backup on Key Peninsula. You won't, you won't find it from Kitsap County. You won't find it from the Gig Harbor Police, and you will also not get it from the State Patrol. So we need to sufficiently fund the sheriff's department so that we can get the correct number of folks out in the streets to keep us all safe.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mitch and then Paula. The question is, "What types of economic development do you see as crucial to Pierce County? And what would you, what should the county council do to foster this type of economic development?" Mitch Anderson?
Well, one of the things that I'm involved in, and actually, I've been involved in both the Gig Harbor Chamber of Commerce and the Tacoma Chamber, Tacoma Pierce County Chamber of Commerce. And Gig Harbor, I served eight years on the board, served as Chair of the Board, and also Treasurer for three years. And I am actually continuing to serve in Tacoma on the Finance Committee, and I also served on the board there for six years. So I'm pretty involved with the economic development. We've got to get our crime situation under control, however, because it's not going to make folks want to bring their companies here. And I think that we need to have the right kind of infrastructure, and we need to streamline some of the licensing and permitting processes for new businesses so that it's not overly cumbersome if they're trying to bring their business here to Pierce County. So those are just a few of the things, and I could go on, but I think the main thing is to make Pierce County an attractive place where, where business owners want to bring their businesses and give them a real viable alternative to moving to Seattle or the east side.
Thank you. Paula Lonergan, what types of economic development do you see as crucial to Pierce County? And what should the county council do to foster this type of economic development?
I believe we need more, more of a diverse employer base. And what I mean by that is, we have a number of small businesses, but I think having larger employers, more options for people so that they are not commuting out of the county. I have lived here since the 70s, off and on, I've moved out, but it's always been my experience that I've had to commute outside of the county for the most part for employment. So I believe it's important that we have more of a diverse employer base from which people can look to for employment and also foster new businesses, just as Mitch has mentioned. And we also need to have laborers who are willing to meet the employer's needs. There are lots of people looking for individuals to work for them, but for some reason, people are not applying for, or they're not qualified for the jobs. And we do need to prepare young people for the jobs that are here now, but also in the future. So those are the areas where I believe through workforce central that we can foster the employment to meet the employment needs that employers have. Thank you.
Thank you. For the next question, we'll start with Paula Lonergan and then Mitch Anderson. The next question is, "Pierce County is planning on spending $40 to $50 million for a tiny home community with supportive services called Community First Village. It will house approximately 300 people. They have $22 million in federal funds that they will use to purchase land for the site. Please comment on this approach to addressing homelessness." Paula Lonergan.
I am truthfully not familiar with this initiative. I can't say that I am wholeheartedly for it because, in my experience, individuals who are homeless may need intervention services. So I would like to ensure that if people are going to go into a tiny home, they're not left on their own, that there will be supportive services to assist them while they're in that location and hopefully transition into a better housing arrangement. I believe the county is doing what it can with the resources that they have, and if they can assist 300 people with these funds, I believe there will be a benefit to the individual if they are ready, and I'm going to say if they are ready, to transition into a different environment so that they can have a long-term fix. Because I do not believe that tiny homes will be the long-term fix, that most individuals will need to be successfully transitioned away from homelessness. Once I know more about the specifics of the program, who's monitoring it, and making sure that we actually do what we need to do to get people successfully out of the homeless situation that they're in, then I can comment further. But those are the things I'd be looking for.
Thank you. Mitch Anderson, your take?
Yes, could I get you to repeat the question, please?
Absolutely. Pierce County is planning to spend $40 to $50 million for a tiny home community with supportive services called Community First Village. It will house approximately 300 people. They have a $22 million grant in federal funds that they will use to purchase land for the site. Please comment on this approach to addressing homelessness.
Well, I'm not overly familiar with this project either, and my first concern upon hearing the type of money involved in building these tiny homes is, what are the qualifications going to be for the people to move in there? My concern would be that we do not want to have another situation like is going on at the hotel out at Hosmer, where it's just turned into a crime mecca and drug haven out there. And so I think that there are some private-public partnerships that could be put together with some of the other organizations like Pierce County Alliance. I would also, it would be nice to get the input from the Tacoma Rescue Mission. And so I think that, you know, the county does a lot of things good, but they don't do all things good. And I would also be concerned about what the oversight's going to be there and where the accountability is for, number one, how that money's spent, and number two, the actual success rate of that program. So as long as it, as long as there are some requirements to live there, in other words, you're clean and not using drugs, then I would be probably in general support of it, but I'd like to hear more about it.
Thank you. I'm going to just take a pause here and ask the Zoom, Teresa Power-Gerudas, could you please indicate, oh, do we have Josh Harris back again?
He just came back on. He was on for a little bit, so maybe ask him a question right now while he's still with us. I think he's trying, I think he's got technical difficulty.
Okay. Josh Harris, are you able to answer this question? I will repeat it for you. Pierce County is planning to spend $40 to $50 million on tiny home community with supportive services called Community First Village. It will house approximately 300 people. They have $22 million in federal funds that they will use to purchase land for the site. Please comment on the approach to addressing homelessness. Josh Harris? Josh Harris, could you please respond? Okay, apparently, he's still having technical difficulties, so we will move on. The next question, we'll start with Mitch. "What would you propose the county council do to reduce traffic accidents, speeding, and congestion in Pierce County?" Mitch Anderson?
Well, that's a good question. You know, part of the problem is making sure you have enough law enforcement out in the streets to make sure that they're properly patrolled. As far as speeding and traffic accidents and congestion, I think those are your three, three main things. You know, reengineering some of the intersections potentially, timing, proper timing of lights. You know, a lot of the stuff here locally falls under the city's jurisdiction. If there are particular areas, I know Highway 16 gets backed up, and you know, now we're talking, needing some help from the state. So I think it's going to be a matter of bringing in the right jurisdictions to provide the support that we need to take care of these problems.
Thank you. I see Josh is back again. So Josh Harris, what do you propose the county council do to reduce traffic accidents, speeding, and congestion in Pierce County? We can't hear you.
He is unmuted, so my assumption is that he's not able to make the device he's working on work. So I think if he does, Josh, if you can hear us and you do get a chance to speak up, let us know that you can speak, okay?
Right. So we'll move on to Paula Lonergan. "What do you think the county council should do to reduce traffic accidents, speeding, and congestion in Pierce County?"
I think you have to do an assessment of where the major problems are and look at the various options. If you look in South Hill, the traffic is really awful there. I don't know if there is a way and what options are available as it relates to helping people get off that main drag and go and find other ways to get to and from work or wherever their commute is. But that's an area where you have to do more study. I just am not sure if you can widen roads. That might be an option, if you can offer mass transit. Because I'm sure it's frustrating for people sitting in their cars. I've had that experience very recently. And I don't know whether it's possible to widen streets, but those are options. I've heard of traffic calming, and there are things that you can do to calm the traffic, but I don't know that they're entirely successful. And as it relates to accidents, I have to say, many times, from what I can tell, many of the accidents happen because people are using substances, and they're under the influence. And quite often, they have these terrible accidents, and then they try to flee the scene, and that requires enforcement. So those are the options that I think we should look at. And once we have more information.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Paula Lonergan. "How have you demonstrated your commitment to anti-racism?"
Anti-racism, how have I demonstrated? Anti-racism. How have I demonstrated my commitment to anti-racism? Well, I don't currently work. I have been involved in, and I do volunteer in many areas. And when you volunteer in community-based organizations like the Salvation Army, or in the past, when I have volunteered in other organizations, you simply deal with each person as you encounter them. And I do not look at any other thing other than what I can do to assist that individual. I have kind of a heart for individuals who have been involved in the criminal justice system to help them transition back into the community. And once again, I look at the individual and what can be done to help them. I don't look at their race, their gender, or anything like that. I no longer do training in the area of civil rights or diversity. So it's more of my belief that I'm there to, I'm here to help people as individuals and to look at them and each situation they're in to determine what can be done to assist them or guide them to a place where they could get the services that they need.
Thank you. Mitch Anderson, how have you demonstrated your commitment to anti-racism?
Well, a couple of things. First of all, by being involved in the Tacoma-Pierce County Chamber of Commerce, there are a couple of programs out there that are actually aimed at the minority population, including the BIPOC or Black Business Accelerator. And it's a, it's a program to basically help new businesses get started that are owned and operated by minorities. And I think it's a, it's a great addition to some of the wonderful programs that the Tacoma-Pierce County Chamber currently offers. In addition to that, well, just last week, I joined in on the vigil for the fourteen-year-old girl that was shot up and killed on the hilltop. And I had the opportunity to listen to some of the, some of the local leadership up there. And I think that I would like to engage in further dialogue with them. I know they have their challenges. They've got, they want to be able to lease their own kids, check their kids was the statement. And also supporting some of the programs that are involved with the kids at risk, like the, there's a youth football program there that has two hundred and fifty kids. So I would like to make sure that those guys have a way of finding funding for scholarships as well.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mitch Anderson. What would you propose that the county council do to ensure preservation of farmland in Pierce County? Mitch Anderson?
Well, I'll have to say, I've watched the Puyallup Valley dwindle in terms of operating farms over the years. You know, as a kid, we used to be able to go out there in March and April and see all the daffodils growing. And those are getting fewer and fewer, and they're being replaced by more and more warehouses and business parks. So, you know, the farmland, I think, is important. The problem is, is that the county continues to expand and more people want to grow, want to move here because it's an attractive place to live and it's an, or in relation to Seattle, it's an affordable place to live. So, you know, I think the only thing that you can do really is control it by zoning, although I'm not in favor of taking away individual landowners' rights. And they should be able to, you know, if they set this property aside for their retirement, and I wouldn't want to have, I wouldn't want to be the one that would take it away from them and tell them that they couldn't sell it to pay for their retirement. So it's, there's, there's no clear answer to that. I would be happy to dig into it deeper and, and once I knew the exact areas that were of concern.
Thank you. Paula Lonergan, what would you propose the county council do to ensure preservation of farmland in Pierce County?
I have been going through the county's, county-wide planning policies document as it relates to the growth management, sort of their version of how to respond to the changes to the Growth Management Act. And I believe it is important to maintain farmland. And I do agree with what has previously been said, that we are losing more and more farmland. I don't know that we're doing very much to encourage people to go into farming, to see that as a viable option. And that is something that young people need to be able to see as, as I said, a viable option as a, and to somehow make a profit in it and not be in enormous debt. I think we need to continue to assess our needs because we do have an anticipated influx of, I think I've heard something like two hundred and some thousand people over the next ten to twenty years that are expected to come to this area. And there's always going to be tension between trying to have adequate housing to meet the need and being able to preserve open space and farmland. So I think that is something that even though there is a plan to address some of that, we still have to look at what we have going on and where we can put density in. And once again, I don't want to stop someone from maintaining their farmland if they want to sell it. So we still have to continue to monitor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question. What ordinances or budget priorities would you propose to make housing more affordable to the residents of Pierce County? And we'll start with Paula Lonergan.
I believe that there are projects that can be encouraged, housing projects that can be encouraged, where you can make housing available at different levels. I actually went on a bus tour on Friday, and I saw examples of that in Puyallup. And I was impressed with the fact that there are other options that people can utilize as it relates to building single-family homes. Yes, we can build apartments, and that is a viable option for many people. But a lot of people have a long-term dream of owning their own property. And there are projects where you can build in communities where you can have different-sized homes in the same block. And then there would be different pricing levels, and those are also options. Those are the primary things that I think we can do. Sorry about that. We may be able to encourage some apartment buildings where they have, like in King County, they have some areas of certain developments that are for lower-income individuals and then some for higher-income individuals that may be an option to explore because we don't do that very often in this county, as I understand.
Thank you. Mitch Anderson?
Right. Could you repeat the question, please?
Oh, absolutely. What ordinances or budget priorities would you propose to make housing more affordable to residents of Pierce County?
Sure. Well, first of all, I would, I'm a firm believer of giving somebody a carrot and not the stick. So I would want to incent the developers to, to build that type of housing and to develop those kinds of developments. And there are some programs right now for the, for the affordable housing programs in terms of vouchers and so on, and they're kind of outdated. So some of that has to be updated and streamlined and also provide easier permitting for those developers wanting to build those types of homes. But you've got to have jobs also to afford these affordable homes. You have to be able to pay for them somehow. And, you know, it's all interrelated. And the county needs to be more business-friendly. And again, remove some of the restrictions to, to owning and operating a business. And then, you know, you just have to remember that businesses don't pay taxes. People, people pay taxes because the businesses just pass those taxes on. So we need to just think about our taxing environment and also our regulation environment to make sure that people are incented to want to go ahead and develop those types of projects.
Thank you. I see that Josh Harris has joined us again. Would you like to answer the question, what ordinances or budget priorities would you propose to make housing more affordable to residents of Pierce County? Ninety seconds.
Yeah, I apologize. We had some audio issues. You know, as a builder for twenty-two years and twenty-eight years in construction, one of the biggest things is the cost of materials, cost of building. We need to streamline permitting processes to make that easier. There's some subsidies that can happen at the state level to help builders build at a more affordable rate, both at the county level and the state level. We need to look, you know, Pierce County's behind, and so is Tacoma, and looking at high-density building correct, in a correct design that works with the community. We need proper zoning. City of Tacoma is a prime example. They've been shoving high-density buildings into residential areas that don't belong. We need to put these, good examples, but they're doing it with the Kmart on Sixth Avenue in Tacoma. We need affordable housing. This can be done with a partnership. Been working for the last nine months, working with community partners, Gray Lumber, people that, Price-Fister, that want to donate or severely discount materials to help meet that affordable housing limit. And we need to look at the AIM to set that price point for builders. So when they're building in this program, they know where they need to be to put that house on the market. There is also a longer detail in this plan that not only allows this person to get into entry-level housing, affordable housing has just been abused, the word's been abused, but entry-level housing that keeps them in the house for five to ten years so that that house can, isn't flipped and sold and creating, again, a home that's unavailable for most people.
Thank you. Thank you. The next question. More than one in seven, one in seven residents of Pierce County speak a language other than English at home. If elected, how will you engage and work alongside communities that speak languages other than English? We'll start with Mitch Anderson, then Josh, then Paula. Mitch Anderson?
Well, that's, that's a really good question. And I have to say, you know, being from Gig Harbor, we don't have those, those types of diverse communities that you might find out more like on South Tacoma Way and so on. But I think you, you need to have liaisons from those communities interacting with the county. And, you know, the language barrier can be, can be challenging. But I would also be for trying to provide some language teaching for folks that English is a second language. I would like to make those available so that we can get everybody on the same page. Because I think if you don't speak English in this country, it puts you at a disadvantage, both socially and economically.
Thank you. Josh Harris, more than one in seven residents speak a language other than English at home in Pierce County. How would you engage and work alongside these communities?
Yeah, I think we've seen the Southern Asian community in Tacoma starting to branch out and bridge those gaps, both teaching Americans their language and vice versa. Tacoma's got a really good program working in their utility system, permitting system, and within the inner government that allows you to choose multiple languages. There's also, and this is pre-COVID, and I don't know if this still exists, but anytime you were going in for government services, you could request for a translator to be available to bridge that gap. And these are some of the things that we'll have to reevaluate and see if, you know, COVID's caused a lot of these programs to not exist or just kind of be canceled, you know, until things got rolling again. And I know the service is available at the Tacoma side because it's, I get the prompt when I'm going through some of our utilities and permitting and government resources there. And we'll have to check in and see how the county's doing at that, at that level, too. But I know the services and the technology is there to help bridge that gap and the communication barrier.
Thank you. Paula Lonergan?
Well, I don't disagree with much of what I've heard. I think making sure there are English as a second language programming. And if we can provide support for not just one group, we have many immigrants coming to this area. And you can't translate every single document. You can't necessarily meet every single need. And frankly, having worked in state government and specifically in unemployment insurance, we've had a requirement to provide translation services if that was needed on demand. Quite often, people can sort of navigate at one level. But when you're starting to talk about something very technical or something where benefits are involved, you may need to provide translation services. I think having used the Pierce County website, I don't recall seeing very many options except perhaps for the, for the elections office where you can ask for information made available in other languages. So I think those are important that we do that. And I think it's important to do an analysis periodically, to actually do an assessment of whether or not there is a need and the population is large enough where it makes sense to make other translated documents or even videos available so that people will understand how to access services within the county.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Josh Harris. What budget proposals and/or ordinances would you support or propose to address substance abuse and mental health issues in Pierce County? Josh Harris?
Yeah, we discussed this last night. Substance abuse being one of the biggest issues we have in the homeless community. These resources, we talked about on the Key Peninsula, are very hard to reach. One of the proposals I have is to, not only in Pierce County District Seven, but in every district in the county, to provide a resource center that really triages people who come in who need services. So they're all centrally located, just like we do in a hospital setting. Triage the needs, be able to get them there, have representatives from those different agencies that can look into them, get them connected, work on the transportation issue while that issue's being fixed. The substance abuse is a huge issue. And there's a lot of, a lot of resources needed to take care of that issue, along with getting people dialed in, back into community, surrounding them with the right people after they get through. Rehab is a big thing that's a big ball dropper right now. You know, they get through thirty days of rehab, and we need to have programs, recreational programs, and groups and clubs and religious organizations that come around them and help support them on their way past that. The mental health issue is a big one, too. Our state has dropped the ball. We need to go back to the state level and leverage hard on them and the governor to get Western State back up to the level of basically two thousand and fifteen. Make those rehab changes that were recommended and get that federal funding, fifty-three million dollars. We've been losing every year of federal funding for Western State, and it's a revolving door. And these people are out on the streets, and that's a big issue for us and law enforcement.
Thank you. Paula Lonergan?
I think we're spending a lot of money to address the problem of homelessness. And I would agree that a significant percentage of the homeless population has a substance abuse or mental health issue. I think one of the things we do not talk very much about is how we can work with the judicial system and understand sort of their thinking and as it relates to having people commit crimes. And then somehow they get, they're able to bail out and be back on the streets. So there, there's no incentive to keep people from becoming career criminals. And we need to do more about that because we do have law enforcement arresting people. But then they are allowed to be back out on the streets. I understand the jail is opening, and so hopefully if we're back to pre-COVID times, we'll be able to house more individuals that need to be housed. But I do believe that discussion with the courts and judges is important to understand what has changed. There used to be a time, many, many years ago, where you couldn't be a vagrant, you couldn't be drunk out in public. But now it appears that you can just about do anything. And you may be locked up for twenty-four hours, but you're back out on the streets again. So even if we're trying to do our very best to address this issue, if we can't stop people going through that revolving door, we're going to continue to have this problem.
Thank you. Mitch Anderson, what should the county do to address substance abuse and mental health issues?
Well, this is one of the areas I think that we should be looking at, private-public partnerships. And there are a number of organizations that are pretty well-equipped to work with these folks that have these addiction issues. One of them would be the Tacoma Rescue Mission. I actually served on the board of directors there and been involved in that program or with that organization for, for many years, serving through my church. And they, they have a number of programs that are working not just to focus on the individuals, but also looking at entire families. Another organization I think that would be key is the Pierce County Alliance. And they work, while they were working with law enforcement, and when law enforcement had contact with people that had substance abuse problems, they would offer them help to get clean. And essentially, those that refused help three times, then they would be arrested for whatever crimes they were committing. The problem is that there's no room in the jail. There's room in the jail, and jail's closed. They're just not bringing people, putting people in jail for their crimes. And the, the other part is the dysfunctional courts right now. And so the Pierce County Alliance has lost a lot of the tools that they were using to be a successful organization. And so we need to get, we need to get the jail back open again.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Paula Lonergan. What ordinances and/or budget priorities would you support or propose for the county council to address climate change? Paula Lonergan.
In looking at our current 2223 budget, I believe there are things in place that the county has in place to look at what can be done within county government to address greenhouse emissions and to encourage. And, you know, I think I need to ask the question again because I think I'm going to miss something.
Sure. What ordinances or budget priorities would you support or propose for the county council to address climate change?
Okay, so what I would say is, what we currently have in place, I would support, but I would also look for new options if there are any, if there is anything new that we can do to address this particular issue. I, once again, have referred to the countywide planning policies document for Pierce County that I know that there are plans in place, and that plan has already been approved. I don't know that we'll be doing anything different, but at least there, and there is a periodic review of what the county has in place as it relates to the policies and the coordination within the county and with other cities and other communities as it relates to doing what can be done to improve the environment. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mitch Anderson.
Well, I think there are a couple of success stories going on in Pierce County right now. And one of them is on the port of Tacoma, where they've actually provided shore power to the ships that come into port, and they can run them off electricity instead of running those nasty bunker-fuel generators while they're in port. So that, that, I think, had a big impact on the air quality locally here, and also transfer or changing over some of those ships to liquid natural gas for fuel instead of, instead of that bunker. So some of those, I'm, I'm a real advocate for. And then also, I think, and it kind of goes along with my transportation views, I think that running full-size public transportation, full-size buses all day long doesn't make sense. And we should pretend, we should potentially look at some smaller or right-sized buses and shuttles for those less-traveled routes. So I hate to see a 40 or 50-person bus going down the road with one person riding in it. I think there's a lot of routes that could take smaller buses in non-rush hour times. So those are just a few, and I'd love to hear from the folks, you know, their, their concerns.
Thank you. Josh Harris.
Yeah, one thing Mitch just touched on is, is a big, transportation on the Key Peninsula is minimal. However, we don't need full-size buses going out there either. So reevaluating some of our bus routes, transportation routes, and getting the right and efficient vehicles on those routes is a big one. I too have seen, you know, buses empty or with one or two people on them. And just taking, reevaluating the use of the bus system. We have a lot of great programs in Pierce County. The solar program is still going through at least this year. I'm actually taking advantage of it on our house. In fact, it's so popular right now. Our install date is ended next year. You know, on the building side, our energy codes are to the highest standard for building in the county and, and the city. We meet some of the highest energy code standards across the nation in building. Our, our Pierce County Clean Air Act, you know, with fireplaces and whatnot, is, has definitely cleaned, cleaned up our air, especially in the winter, you know, when we have more stagnant air, fog, and not as much wind clearing out the area here. Can there be more done? Yeah, and like Mitch said, you know, it takes a community coming in and, and bringing concerns to the table. But I think Pierce County has really done a good job on, on leading in that area. Can we always do more? Yes. And as technology advances, yeah, there's all kinds of ways in the port. The port's cleaned up a lot of their act, the commercial industry, industrial industry, and the way they exhaust their fumes. So I think we've done a really good job, and we'll continue to do a good job.
Thank you very much. Next question, we'll start with Mitch Anderson. What ordinances or budget priorities would you propose that the county council use to prepare for the next regional emergency, say, a natural disaster or pandemic? Mitch Anderson.
Oh, I'm glad you asked that question. Me being a financial advisor, I'll tell you what my biggest, my biggest case of heartburn on this current council is, is they're not putting any money of this COVID, of these COVID relief funds. So we're talking, you know, over $100 million they got for COVID relief, and they didn't put a dime of it back into the rainy day fund. And I'll tell you, it was that rainy day fund that got us our protective gear and our, our COVID tests when the pandemic first arrived on the scene. And so instead, with this, with this COVID relief money, there have been programs funded with that money. But it's one-time money. So there's this big bow wave of new programs and new spending. But I'll tell you what, come, you know, a year from now, there's going to be a bunch of people screaming because their little pet projects ran out of money, and that's not a sustainable model. So let's get the, let's make sure that we properly fund the sheriff, make sure we have sufficient funding to get the right number of deputies back out on the streets. And let's, let's put some money away for a rainy day because there, there will be another rainy day.
Thank you. Josh Harris. What do you think the county council should do to prepare for the next regional emergency?
I, I know they are always planning, looking at the different scenarios, earthquake scenario, volcano scenario, and God forbid, any kind of terrorist scenario. I was a fireman for seven years, volunteer fireman over in University Place. I served at Ground Zero for a month and a half, recovering, search and recovery, and saw an amazing, we really stepped up to the plate on disaster effectiveness and, and management. And those tools that were learned at Ground Zero have been passed on now to where we are today. Budget-wise, for the financing part, yeah, we've had a lot of money wasted in the name of COVID out of the COVID relief money, but we also have a ton of money in the budget, and I mean millions, that we're wasting on homelessness. It's not producing good fruit. It is not helping people. I think once we bring a little bit of accountability to some of these resources that are tax-funded and reevaluate them, we're going to find out we got, we, we have a lot of money that we can save and reinvest and still have money to put into disaster relief. And quite frankly, even though, you know, volcano disaster, tsunami, earthquake, these are all credible things that can happen here. Right now, we're dealing with a real issue with homelessness. One thing we're not talking about is hepatitis outbreak in, in these homeless camps and how it's passed on through the unsanitary conditions they're living in, and that it makes some of the neighborhoods unsanitary. So I think a lot of accountability needs to be brought to our budget and to these resources, and we'll find that we have a lot of.
Thank you. Paula Lonergan.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yes. What should the county council do to prepare for the next regional emergency, such as a natural disaster or pandemic?
Well, I think there are a few things that can be done. One has to do with the Office of Emergency Management to make sure that the needs that have been identified in that office are met. I don't know that I entirely agree that there is no money in the rainy day fund because I believe we heard last night from the county executive that they are putting money into an emergency fund. I do believe that there are things that we can do, and I'm sort of going back to the time when I was younger where you might have to do some community awareness to prepare people for things that they might do in the event a volcano overflows or there's flooding. Quite often, we're not prepared for that kind of thing. And so I think there's some community awareness things we can do. I think any warning systems that are currently in place, we need to make sure that those are operating so that people are warned in time and that there are, there are exercises being conducted on a regular basis to prepare, prepare children in the event that they have to leave their school because of an emergency, heaven forbid. But those are some of the things that I would like to see done and would believe that there are, that's a priority that we should be looking at because we are talking about more COVID. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Josh Harris. Kids can't vote, but elected officials represent them. If elected, what do you propose to do through the council to promote the well-being of children in Pierce County? Josh Harris.
Yeah, you know, one of our biggest issues right now, and not only with the spike in crime, but is resources for these kids. COVID was a really big killer for recreational, isolated kids. Even my own son, being 15 and not being around his friends in the social environment, I really took a toll on him. It was something we had to talk and talk through with him. And a lot of kids have, I worked in Raymond Hall and with their 180 youth mentorship program outside and inside Raymond Hall. And a lot of these kids are raised in single-family homes. They need structure. They need a place to go. I have a friend, Thret Brown, he's started the Young Businessmen of Washington up on Hilltop, and we're trying to help him get that off and fully launched. I'd like to see something like this, like I was talking about with the resources in every district, where we have, again, one of, this would be one of those resources where we get kids connected, not just in the metro parks and baseball, soccer, athletics, but in hiking and fishing and, you know, to, to explore all their interests. You know, and every kid's into sports. With Threats Program, it goes into podcasting, helping kids get certifications for different avenues so they can pursue better jobs, get better jobs than just a job at McDonald's. Although right now, they're paying $20 an hour to work at McDonald's. But we need to have these opportunities for kids, not only to educate them, but help get them certifications, get them through the hurdles, even 911, you know, getting their driver's licenses can be a hurdle. And so we need these opportunities for them.
Thank you very much. Paula Lonergan, what would you propose for the council to promote the well-being of children in Pierce County?
I would, a couple of areas that I think would be important, and that would be continuing youth programs, especially programs sponsored through the Parks Department. I don't know what they do in, on the peninsula, but I know Metro Parks does offer different programs for children. In fact, I was just looking at it earlier. Music in the park, places for young people to go to. I know they have a community center, I believe it's in Key Peninsula area for youth, that was set up, established by a donation from a private family, and it needs to be maintained. I think as long as we have that going on, can we encourage churches and other nonprofits to be involved in youth? I think mentoring programs, as has been mentioned, is a good idea. And I think high school education programs that offer children who do not want to go to college but may be interested in other career options, especially where we know that we're going to have a skill deficit, perhaps in construction or in the trades, encouraging our educational facilities to offer those kinds of programs, like sailing programs, to get people involved in the marine area or sailing area, and because it can be very lucrative. Those are all options that I think the county can, and something that I would like to see done and promote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mitch Anderson.
Well, I was one of those kids that was kind of an activities junkie. I think I did everything possible from all kinds of sports, music, civic groups. And I think that we need to make sure that those types of choices are still available for our kids. I, I mentioned earlier that the, you know, some of the youth football teams, especially the, the one that I was listening to their coach speak the other night at the vigil. You know, they, they take care of, they've got 250 kids in their program. And I, I would just would want to make sure that those programs are properly funded. Now, we're, we're crossing jurisdictions and different park districts and so on, and they are their own taxing entities. But I think there's some partnership opportunities between Pierce County and those park districts and communities where we could, you know, really share resources and make it a more enriched offering for the kids. So I'm all about making sure that they've got mentors. I like the Boys and Girls Club. I like the Big Brothers programs, any of those mentoring-type programs for those single-parent families that are maybe missing the male, most of the time, they're missing the male influence in their life.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Paula Lonergan. What experience do you have working with reducing barriers for vulnerable populations, like the elderly, disabled, and low-income? What experience do you have working with these groups? Paula Lonergan.
Well, I've worked in human resources and in the area of civil rights when I was employed by the state. And one of the last things I did while working for the Employment Security Department was to get the department to actually look at some of our options for applying for unemployment benefits before we had the big fraud problem, but to make information available in other languages to help people identify maybe what language they might need if they have, if someone was talking to someone in a work source office, then, and if they could point to a flag that represented their country, then someone would know what language they potentially spoke so that they can get connected to translation services and try to communicate with people. I think we just need to acknowledge that we do have a diverse community, and we need to be prepared and not totally shocked when we experience, have the experience of encountering individuals from different communities and try to be proactive and think ahead about what can be done within our county to make the county more friendly for individuals. Thank you.
Thank you. Mitch Anderson, what experience do you have working with reducing barriers for vulnerable populations?
Well, one of the vulnerable populations that I've been working with a lot is in, in my own family. It's elderly with dementia or Alzheimer's. And, you know, even before they get to that stage, I just think that the communities are really lacking in the areas of senior centers. And I, it, it just hurts my heart to see people that once had vibrant careers being shut in and just sitting in their chair watching TV all day. I would really like to see more support for these senior centers and, and getting those folks out and getting them some, some recreation and, and entertainment instead of just spending their last days watching TV. As far, as the younger population goes, you know, making sure that there are the resources available for the special education-type programs in, in the school districts, both during and after school.
Thank you. Josh Harris, what's your experience working with reducing barriers for vulnerable populations?
So, starting with our veterans. So starting with our veterans, we've actually done a program the last twelve years. There's a program for veterans that help make their home accessible, whether it's, you know, whether they're walker, crutch or wheelchair. We participate in that program. We also have a program through my construction company that we work with law enforcement and other agencies that come to us, including the, the media. When they run into someone with ADA accessible needs, we have a great community partnership with a lot of vendors. Gray Lumber, Home Depot that donate material and we donate labor and material to, to taking care of those needs. I know we have a really great transportation system. And, you know, unfortunately, as some of my elderly family, my grandmother, great-grandfather have gotten into their nineties, you know, we have a really good transportation system for, for getting elderly people places. But I have noticed between my great-grandfather and my, my grandmother that, I think Mitch touched on this, there's not a lot of programs outside of the facilities they live in. I, I know the facility she had had a lot of programs, but getting them outside, you know, breathing fresh air, connecting with youth, connecting our young. I know our, our Boy Scouts take a couple of times a year, a few times a year. Actually, now we go in, now that COVID's over, we'll go back in and and have them go in and do activities or maybe fix something for them. The other side of that is affordability. I, I'm shocked that how much it costs to, to get old, retire and be in one of these facilities is ridiculous. And not everybody can afford it. So that's something we need to have on the affordable housing issue.
Thank you. We're at the last question for the evening. And we will start with Mitch Anderson. In this era of partisan deadlock, how would you work to find common ground with the other party for the benefit of the people of Pierce County? Mitch Anderson.
Well, you know, it's, it's, it's really sad that the partisan politics has really taken the stage in the country, not just in the county. And I think when you step back and take a look at it, we have more, more in common than we do have differences. And there, I think, is a lot of common ground where, where we can work together. You know, if, if we're raising kids, we've got, we've got the same, the same wants and needs for those kids. We want them to be successful. We want them to be safe. We want them to have the opportunities that we had growing up. And I, I just think that we can roll up our sleeves if both sides are willing to, to give a little bit, to get a lot. I, I, I just think that a lot can be gained by working together. I think in previous years on the council, there's been a lot more bipartisan support for, for projects. And I would like to see that era reintroduced to the Pierce County Council.
Thank you. Josh Harris.
Yeah, you know, running as a D and R and I, these labels that we keep putting on ourselves keep segregating us and creating barriers. You know, we need to look at, right now, the major issues we have is public safety, homelessness, mental illness. And these things are human issues. They're, they're not political issues. They're human issues that need to be addressed. And we had, I jumped on board. We launched Tacoma Safe and we've now expanded it Tacoma Pierce County Safe. And it's, it's about bringing the community together and everyone fitting the needs that need to be met. People from all over walks of life, including defense attorneys who have come and sat at the other side of the table and asked why they're, what clients are not being taken into the jail. This, these are community issues that everyone needs to come together and it's gonna take a community to fix them. We need to stop the, the labels and, and come together as, as people, as citizens, as Pierce County and Tacoma work around with our neighbors and University Place and, and the other surrounding municipalities around the district and solving these issues. And we need to come to the table with common sense, good, good stewardship principles and fix these problems. And they can be done if we come together. And that is our primary goal, not an agenda.
Thank you. Paula Lonergan.
When you work in government, when you volunteer in the community, when you are out and about working with different people, you are there most of the time to provide service. You're there to help others. There is no looking at whether you have a label of being of one party or another. And frankly, I'm very saddened to sometimes experience some of the hatred that people can project because they find out that I belong to a specific party. But what I find is if you check yourself, what you take into a situation where you are working with a group of people and you have something in common, you're trying to run the county, you're trying to get something done. Your focus should be on the citizens and meeting their needs. For example, public safety, looking at housing issues, looking at transportation issues and trying to come up with solutions that make sense. There are solutions that are very expensive and sometimes don't make any sense. There are solutions that are pretty easy to implement if we simply can come to an agreement of what the real problem is and how we can solve the problem. Then if we can get away from the labels, as has been mentioned, I think that is the most important thing. And then I think we also need to do more than just talk about civility. We need to actually engage in that civil behavior and keep, keep a focus on who we are.
Thank you. Thank you. Now it's time for closing statements. And each candidate has up to one minute for their closing statement. We'll change the order of the opening statements. So we're gonna start with Josh Harris, then Paula Lonergan, and, and then Mitch Anderson. So Josh Harris, your one-minute closing statement, please.
Yeah, thank you, first of all, for providing this opportunity to reach out to the viewers and, and the people at the Women League of Voters. You know, I've lived here my entire life, with the exception of a year down in Los Angeles. And Pierce County is a wonderful place. Our state is a wonderful place. We're a recreational mecca. And we have people leaving by the droves because they're tired of paying for services they're not getting, especially in the public safety realm. We are, are, are really cheating the taxpayer right now on a lot of issues that these resources that I've been digging into for over the last two years are, are, are wasted. Where, like I said before, we're not getting good fruit from it. We're, we're spending money more, millions and millions more every year, and the problem is getting worse. These issues need accountability addressed on all levels. Our jail needs to be reopened fully. I talked to the sheriff yesterday and I don't know that it's fully opening, but I, you know, the health department needs to relinquish its hands off of our jail. Our judicial system, it was said earlier, needs to function correctly and not PR these people back onto the streets. People need to be held accountable and we need to give them services.
Thank you. Thank you. Paula Lonergan.
Thank you. I believe it's a privilege to serve the citizens of Pierce County. And I want to serve the citizens in District Seven. I don't believe I'm the expert. I don't need to be the expert. What I need to do is to be willing to listen, to interact with people, to hear what their concerns are, and then to try to figure out what can be done to meet those needs. There are times when people will say things where they imply that they know what the answer is or they've already figured out that they can do something that really cannot be done. And I'm not there. I am there to hear, to serve the citizens of this district, and that's what I desire to do. That's why I've put myself forward to be more involved, to represent the citizens of District Seven and to serve. That's why I want to be elected in this position. Thank you.
Thank you. Mitch Anderson.
Well, again, thank you for having us as guests on your forum today. I just am so excited to be running for county council. When I was approached to run for office, my wife and I had a discussion, and actually, we've been having a discussion about me running for public office for over a decade. So it's exciting times for me, it's exciting times for my family. Growing up here, raising our five kids and enjoying all that Pierce County has to offer. I just want to give back to this community that's been so good to me and my family. And you know, God gave us two ears and one mouth, and that's how I plan on, on operating in this position as a councilman is listening to what my constituents are concerned about and what's on their mind so that we can take those ideas and come up with great solutions. Thank you.
Thank you all. In ballot order, the candidates for the Pierce County Council, District Seven are Josh Harris, Mitch Anderson, Robin Denson, Paula Lonergan, and Chuck West. You all should receive your ballot by July eighteenth, that's Monday. Be sure to vote early and no later than August second. I'd like to thank the candidates who participated, the Timekeeper Terry Baker, Tacoma Pierce County League of Women Voters, and our community sponsors, the Affordable Housing Consortium, Asia-Pacific Cultural Center, Grit City Co-op, Latinx Unidos of South Sound, the NAACP of Tacoma, the Sumner Waller Community Association, the Tacoma Urban League, Vibrant Schools, and the YWCA of Pierce County. You can see other League of Women Voter Candidate Forums at lwtpc.org. Read your voter's pamphlet. Look at vote411.org where you can find answers to questions posed to all candidates running for office. Read the candidates' websites and do all that you can to be an educated voter. And don't forget to vote on August second. Thank you all and have a wonderful evening. Thanks again. And thank you so much for putting up with all the technical difficulties tonight. Take care, everyone.
Thank you. Sorry for.
Yeah.